No.
Yep, yes. Yep.
Okay. Hi, Diana.
Hi.
I see you peeking around there.
Oh, thanks, man. Good for you. I forget. Yes, good. Thank you. Thanks.
How do I turn the volume up on this?
Well, it's six o'clock. Is Cheryl gonna run this meeting for us today?
You're here too.
In the... What's that?
Yes.
Okay, good enough. I'm just making sure. Our three o'clock there, six o'clock my time, sorry.
This one's five thirty. Right there.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm very impressed that we have so many law enforcement here. Merry Christmas, guys. We have public forum. The public may address the council in the item. This is on the agenda. Should the request for an action by the city council be placed by a lawyer, a judge, a speaker, or two other freemen, speakers may not see their time unless consent of the court is placed. Do you want to speak?
Yes. My name is Carol Madison. Most people know me as the executive director of Teach, but I'm also Sid Call of the Sister. I would like to thank the city, Mark, and all the officers. Eric Hunter from the Roydy Center for the Procession Home. The professionalism with which our government was treated was beyond reproach. These officers here are fabulous officers, and we should be very proud of them. So, thank you from Pat, my sister-in-law, myself, you know, so. Thank you, guys.
Two of the rules of the business to be... I would like to make a motion to...
Hold on. I have to ask for an addition to the agenda, because I asked for an agenda item that didn't actually reflect what I asked for in item number six. So, I'd like to read in to this record with the...
Can I make a motion first?
Well, I'd like to do this before you make the motion to approve it, Kelly.
All right.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear Cheryl very well before she was finished, but if you guys want to approve it as is, I would still like to make a read in in addition to the item number six.
My, my motion was to, just to move item number five and number six up on the agenda. That's the only thing. So, I think if you wanted to make a motion to...
Read one or add one, I guess.
Would be after my motion, or?
Right, because I think you're trying, Kelly's trying to have the stuff considered at five and six, considered earlier. She's got a time constraint. Mr. Mayor, so I think if you want to add something to that, it might make sense for her to go first, then have your added in that same order. She just wants to make sure it gets considered while she's still here.
Kelly, I apologize. I thought you were gonna make a motion to approve, so I did speak over you. I, that sounds perfect. Sorry, Kelly. I apologize.
Okay, so my, my motion was just to move items five and six up on the agenda to the three and four spot in that order. If I have a motion to approve that. Should be second.
Yes.
Now, I think, I think...
I think you need to call Brad. Sheriff, you need to call, because we have a virtual council member. We're going to be rounding back and tell if the agents require a motion. Second, we call, and then if he calls, we'll call vote, so that they basically don't like they're up here. They are visual, they're up here. It's also voting, so.
So, how would I word that?
You would word that as, we have a motion in a second, roll call vote, and then if he calls, we'll call vote.
You have a motion in a second, roll, roll, vote. Sheriff Ross, speak. Hi. Hello, what? Hi. Hi. Councilmember, talk.
I to move items five and six up in the agenda.
Roll the vote.
Okay. I can't hear you very well. Can I make the motion now to read in the agenda item I actually wanted on the agenda?
You have to ask or...
Depends on if it changes the scope of what, once they're there or not.
Well, it may fit in the scope, but it's a little, the wording of what was, what I sent to Dorothy and what was put on the agenda has changed a little bit. So, let me go over that, okay? I'll read it, and Jeff, you can tell me your opinion on this.
Go ahead.
So, the item I sent in that I wanted on the agenda is a discussion action item for the police chief position. The discussion of scheduling, an interview panel, qualifications such as education, professional experience, training, administrative experience, reviewing the contract, discussing California's at-will employment for the chief of police, and salary range. And I said I'd address the council on that. I did not ask this item six to be the appointment of the chief of police or to consider the appointment. I'm strictly wanting item six to discuss the necessary process for actually determining a chief of police.
I believe item six would actually encompass what you're requesting as, so generally, because that, that covers all of that. So, you can change it, but I think what's on there actually covers what you're talking about. It's process. I mean, it depends on what you guys, what the council wants to do as far as end of way process, all those qualifications, all that I think fits within that, what is in the one that's already there. So, and the...
Okay.
Or expand itself, you know, choosing an internal versus external posting, or even not even going that far into saying what have work sessions. The council has, this provision generally is, that covers the full gamut. So, I think as long as motions are...
Okay.
But I think the province has been provided fair notice of what's there. So, all those things discussed, I think, are encompassed within that, and the council can live with themselves or expand themselves within that ambit.
Okay, Jeff, then we can go, and I won't need to make that motion.
But somebody does need to make a motion to approve the agenda as, as now amended.
Can I make a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda irons as amended with those changes to their location on... And second, that motion?
Okay. All right, you call for a roll call vote.
Roll, 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 sorry. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, discussion action of police officers association and the Alters, the fire department would like to submit letters of support for Mark Muller, Chief of Police. City of Alters, Alters officers. Alters Police Officers Association President Whitby, Fire Chief. Well, I think Mark's done a great job.
Do you hear me?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Cody Whitby, as most of you know. I'm a sergeant with the Alters Police Department and the president of the Police Officers Association. Thank you all for making time to meet with us here today. Before I get started, has everyone had the opportunity to review the letters submitted by the Police Officers Association? The reason the Police Officers Association has requested this agenda item, once the city council, that it was brought to our attention from a former full-time employee of the police department, the member of the city council, had shared his intentions to externally apply the position for chief of police as opposed to promoting him within the department. The Police Officers Association, along with several other agencies and department heads, strongly disagree with these intentions. The Police Officers Association fully believes that Sergeant Mark Muller is more than qualified and capable of leading this department. Sergeant Muller possesses the right attitude, determination, endurance, and desire to fulfill the duties of chief of police. Sergeant Muller has already demonstrated this ability during his appointed time as acting chief. Sergeant Muller was appointed acting chief with little to no preparation or warning. During this time as acting chief, he has more than fulfilled his administrative and leadership duties. Sergeant Muller has coordinated the repairs by multiple patrol vehicles. He has successfully passed the Department of Justice audit without prior notification. He has quickly learned the processes for the department's payables and expenditures, and he has quickly learned the process, correction, sorry about that, and he is currently working with the city fire department on a grant for new radios. He has faced any and all issues and concerns head-on and used the appropriate avenues of support when needed. Sergeant Muller has quickly demonstrated his ability to find and fix department needs while working hand-in-hand with allied agencies. Prior to being appointed acting chief, Sergeant Muller demonstrated his grant-writing abilities on numerous occasions. He authored multiple grants, which ultimately supplied the department with new service weapons, which were previously outdated and posed a danger to officer and public safety. Sergeant Muller assisted in the writing of the USDA grant that contributed to the Alters Police Department receiving two much-needed patrol vehicles. Sergeant Muller has shown loyalty to this department and community through his years of public service. He stuck with the Alters Police Department in a time when we had only three acting members. During this time, Sergeant Muller was forced to work a night shift to ensure the department was operational. Prior to that time, Sergeant Muller rotated between day and night shift, nighttime sergeant shift, during which time he had the opportunity to work hand-in-hand with Chief Collins. Our department does not currently house a lieutenant position, and those, those duties fall for the sergeant regardless of which shift they're on. After hearing of this intent to externally apply the chief position, the Police Officers Association has spent numerous hours in discussion and conducting our own research. During this process, I've had the pleasure of speaking with retired chief, Ken Barnes. Barnes advised me that he is also in favor of Sergeant Muller being appointed to the chief position and is more than willing to assist Sergeant Muller during his transition to chief role, if need be. Given the unfortunate circumstances that led us here today, Sergeant Muller does not have chief fones to fall back on, but he has the full support of the P O A and of a retired chief. Most importantly, Sergeant Muller understands the inner workings of this department and the specific needs of our communities. If the position of chief of police is flown and appointed externally, Sergeant Muller would be tasked with training that individual in not only the administrative aspect of this department, but also the inner workings of this department and the specific needs of our community. Sergeant Muller has spent the last almost decade loyally serving this department and already understands its needs. In some cases, an outside influence has the ability to bring inside influence to a struggling department. The Alters Police Department is not that. The Alters Police Department is growing and thriving under the direction and leadership of Sergeant Muller. The goals and objectives that were set forth by Chief Collins and prior chiefs beforehand are still in place. Sergeant Muller has more than shown the ability to adapt and overcome adversity as acting chief. Furthermore, he has shown that he is capable of learning the administrative demands of the Alters Police Department prior to receiving any formal training. As the Police Officers Association has referenced in our submitted letters, the city council has set its precedent with the appointing of the position of chief police. The prior two police chiefs were appointed by city council based on recommendations of the retiring chief. Both Chief Barnes and Chief Collins were appointed as chief of police without a formal interview process and without applying the position externally or internally. Ultimately, both of the previously mentioned chiefs were faced with learning the administrative duties of the position, as would any other sergeant, officer, or lieutenant appointed to the position of chief police. Thank you again for your time and for your continued support in our department.
Thank you.
James Lloyd, city fire chief. My letter is in your package. I don't have a copy of that. We are here with my fellow chiefs and the lieutenant of the fire department to support Alters Police Department. They help us so much with our on-scene, whether we're doing medical calls, make sure we're secure there. I understand the time they're first on scene for our structured fires, and they give us a size up before we show up, what's going on. The working relationship we have with them, it's high impact. We work hand-in-hand, and we appreciate that. My experience has seen the last, since I became chief, you know, and there was a time when there was very few police officers on that force. I know that at some point there was outside agencies covering, and we didn't have that kind of support as we had in the past, but I've seen that build up with the great police department. Might as well be, we hire outside, but then when all of them are there, maybe we lose our forcing. So, we fully support acting chief, Mark Muller becoming city police chief. Thank you.
I, I have some comments, but I'm gonna wait till after I see last.
Hi, Pat Collins. Sid Call of the Widow, unfortunately. This was just brought to my attention today, this is the old agenda, and I just wanted to give it up here and a state thank you. Well, I've been awesomely through this. It's definitely having more family. I appreciate that. My husband told me numerous times, but especially when he was sick, what a great group of people he worked with, because they're all so intelligent. I would trust this department with any of them, but following the line of succession, he asked that Mark be appointed inter-chief and said his apologies for what poor Mark had been brought into when he did. And he was so proud from the feedback that he got, that Mark was doing such a great job considering he, he felt like keep putting in the spin cycle, the pushing machine, when, when what happened, happened. So, I believe that he felt Mark could do the job, and I personally believe, I said before, and he's not here now, that in, I, I'm back up, I'm getting anxious. I personally believe that Mark has done the job and done it adverbially and would have made your chief proud. And there has been precedent for appointing chiefs. I, I firmly believe that you should be appointed, in my opinion, obviously. We have a very small town and a small department. They're very cohesive. They are a wonderful team. And I, I would hope to see something happen with that. I've heard from them individually, what a great job they think Mark has done. I've heard from outside people that they didn't have anything to worry about. Mark is doing an awesome job, and I would just like to see him in the company. But obviously, that's in your hands. Thank you.
I'm gonna talk a little more, sorry. On this particular agenda item, I gratefulheartedly, with Pat, I have had occasion to work with most of the officers from the department, just by virtue of active eventual, or occasionally, we get some upset clients that teach, and, and we depend on the, the police department to come and help us out. Personally, I've been on calls with Mark before. He's reminded me a lot of Sid, in that Mark doesn't lose his cool. He's very even, very level-headed. And I just think he's done a great job as chief. I told Sid that when he was still alive, and Sid was very proud, very proud of all of it. Anything else you'd comment? So, we have a discussion action.
I think, I think the council member that wanted that, the discussion on this point.
All right. Did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm gonna withhold until discussion action item number six, and just a discussion item. I, I recognize the support.
They have any special? I think Mark has done an excellent job.
Sorry, Sheriff, pretend he did. I always, I can't answer without the bottom sequence. You need to announce the day. You need to announce that, switch the next agenda item, drop support letters, and then I'm talking about you, so that it's good work. We're on to, so if anybody's listening in or whatever, kind of, everything's gotta be, kind of, have announced, because people can't see.
Okay. So, we're on number six. Discussion action, council direction for the position, should appoint the vacant position of Alters Police Chief.
Okay, thank you. I hope you all can hear me. I have trouble hearing you on this Zoom meeting. So, I'm the one who has stated that we should fly the position, and I'm gonna give you some reasoning behind that, but what I want you to know is the procedure in law enforcement for promotion and advancement that I've experienced in my career. So, in general, you test, and you compete against other applicants for every promotion. We have a uniquely small department in Alters. When we promoted Cody, there was no other candidate to promote at that position. There was nobody to test against for that position. And Cody, as it is right now, he mentioned in his speech that as a P O A representative sergeant would be, mentioned that Mark had successfully sent Chris to SWAT training, but Cody's been in his job for eight months, and he has not gone to first-line supervisor school yet. He has one year to accomplish that, eight or nine months, and he has one year to get that school out of the way, or post won't recognize him being a sergeant. SWAT training is not a mandatory training. And the reason I bring this up is I'm talking about administrative experience. And the reason I brought up interviewing, nobody in any way, shape, or form, am I implying that Mark has done a poor job acting as chief. Mark has followed through with the vehicle purchase that was already approved by the council in March, and Sid had in motion, and I worked with helping Dorothy to complete that vehicle purchase for the department. Mark has followed through with the candidate that Sid had already interviewed that was on the list and moving him forward and hiring a, our front office secretary for the department, okay, and dispatcher. He's followed through with those. Those were programs that were started by Sid. I agree with that. He's followed through with some other things in his time as acting chief. The D O J audit was very interesting, because I was the one who was met with the D O J agents at the front door of the chambers after one of our meetings, and I handled about an hour of the D O J audit, and nobody in the Alters Police Department had ever taken and handled the D O J audit before. Mark did pick that up from that place, but I worked with those agents for about an hour, both of which were retired C H P agents. And my point in this is that the reason I said we should interview is it's the professional thing to do. And when I say professional, in an interview process, there are several things we're looking at. We're looking at the actual experience. So, in my career, I can put together a curriculum vitae or a resume, and that includes every piece of training I've had during my career. It includes, includes the job assignments I've had. It also includes the administrative duties I had. As a council, none of us really actually know what Mark's administrative background, experience, or administrative duties have been. I kind of have an idea, because Sid and I discussed this. I talked in-depth with Sid about moving Mark into a day shift position so that Sid could begin to move him into an administrative position. I also worked with Ken Barnes. I also worked with Sid before they were chiefs, and both of them were very active in the department and administrative roles before they promoted to chief. Both of them were promoted from the lieutenant position, which is usually considered the administrative, beginning of the administrative curve in law enforcement. So, the other thing about promoting and through interviews is you get a personnel folder. You learn if the officer has citizen complaints in their background, or the applicant would have citizen complaints in their background. You learn those training things. You earn if they have maybe had any evidence handling, like an evidence officer, if they've been, been involved with fleet management, how much scheduling they've done, equipment management. You learn about their records handling, if they know anything about records and retention, if they've done any of the training records, if they know the repetitive required training by post. You know if they've done departmental audits. These are things that should come out in a professional interview for a chief of police. At no point would I suggest that Mark would not be eligible to interview, but do we know if Mark's educational? Does he have a criminal justice degree? There are a lot of people who cannot, most departments, and many of them are starting to require criminal justice degrees, and in fact, the state of California started moving towards requiring a, a degree to become a law enforcement officer, period. So, I'm looking at these things, and I thought, none of us on this council right now really know what the background we have, and we're promoting a chief of police to run a department. In that department, sitting there right now, we have two cadets who just came out of field training. They don't have any idea what the career of law enforcement is. They just got off their field training. We have a new officer who transferred over from the district attorney's office. We have Chris. We have Cody who promoted to sergeant but has not even gone to frontline supervisor school, and we have Mark who was a sergeant, working on nights, and may or may not have the administrative experience to do the job. I would hope that Mark would apply and interview and have every bit of the experience, because I would like to see continuity within the department. But when I look at this from a professional standpoint, and that professional standpoint being, how would an administrative position at the high school, say, be given? So, if you're applying for the job of principal, and you're the vice principal, is it automatically handed to the vice principal? It's not. I know that. What happens is they fly the position, they interview applicants, and if the vice principal's the best applicant... What happens is they fly the position, they interview applicants, and if the vice principal is the best applicant, they select them. We have a very young department. We've been trying to rebuild for over a year. And yes, it worked down to three officers. And Sid, and I was impressed by the work ethic of this, the men and women we have there. I am. But I'm also looking to make sure that we have strong leadership. And one of the reasons for that is because in today's law enforcement world right now, the liability that the city faces, if we make errors in judgment in leadership, and I'm going to tell you, that error can be on evidence. That error can be at the scene of a critical incident. ICS system, I was a sergeant and I was trained to be a sergeant. I can sit there and quote you the ICS system to this day. Do you, you guys understand the ICS Incident Command System at any critical incident? Okay? And the reason I can do that is the training that I received in that and that we had to know that. And we, we were tested on that before we could promote. And my point in this is that if you make a mistake in the ICS system and you make a mistake in handling, say, a critical incident, and I'll give you a worst case scenario, an officer-involved shooting. You make a mistake in handling that, the liability, the liability can be huge to the department, both in the officer. And I'm going to talk about the psychological aspect. When I was talking with Sid about equipment, I brought this up to you guys inside of our department. When I was talking with Sid, there were no departmentally issued replacement handguns for our officers. One of the really interesting things about showing up at an officer-involved shooting is that the officer who's involved is a victim. And one of the things you have to do is you have to take his weapon. The psychological aspect of that is that an officer, when his weapon is taken, feels as though he's being, uh, viewed as a criminal. If you can't replace the weapon immediately with another departmentally issued weapon. The last time I talked to Sid, there were no departmentally issued weapons available. We haven't, we don't have that equipment right now. We knew this was a problem, things that need to be brought forward. But these are the type of things that it takes a lot of experience and years in law enforcement to know how to do. It also goes to victims, victims of sex crimes, proper evidence handling for good prosecution, proper reports, writing, all of these things come down from your chief. And my point, Mark may be fully qualified in all of that. But as a council, each one of us up there on the council, I know that I'm the only one up there with an actual post background, been through the supervisor school, actually did the equivalent of SWAT training, worked with warrant service out of the Northern Division. I was a representative for the officers into my department for eight and a half years. Interestingly enough, I find it very interesting that our Peace Officers Association has a sergeant as the president. We weren't allowed to have a sergeant as a president for the officers. An association is usually designed so that the officers can approach management and discuss concerns about their training, about procedures and policies with management. When you have a manager acting as the Peace Officer Association president, you have slightly a conflict of interest if your officers have a problem with something that management did. But yet Cody's sitting here addressing you as the president of the Peace Officer Association. My point on this, Kelly, is that what I want to know is that when the, we hire, if we just simply appoint without knowing the qualifications of the individual we're appointing, we look, I don't know that we're pursuing professionalism if we do that. And what I want to see with this department, we have a very young department, very low experience, and it needs very strong leadership that is familiar with state law and all these things and more. We've been struggling to rebuild their, the police department for over a year now. I don't have any data with Mark at all. But I want to make sure that we have the most qualified person leading that department. And my suggestion on this, and I've talked to Jeff about it, and the suggestion is that what we need to do is we need to do a work session. We need to discover or discuss as a council, what the exact qualifications we need in that position are. We need to determine what the job contract will be, what the salary range will be. We need to determine what professional, um, capabilities we require for that position. And we need to consider flying it outside of the department. In fact, I'm very strongly opposed to not flying it. We don't know what applicants are out there, what education level, what background in running other departments that may apply. And if we don't consider that as a city, I think we're doing a disservice to the public. The public is, is being well-served by our department. But a public also is going to face a liability, our entire city. If we don't have a highly trained person in there, I'm going to tell you right now, if we did appoint Mark, Mark, level of training is going to have to increase dramatically. I spoke to Mark about attending the Police Chiefs Association meeting if he was to take this job. I spoke to Sid about that. In Sid's entire career inside of the law enforcement community, he had never attended a Police Chiefs Association meeting. These are meetings where you get updates on current law for police chiefs. And I'm very, this is about raising the standard inside of our department. Is Mark our candidate? I do not know. Do I think Mark's done a qualified job for us as acting chief? I do. Am I against Mark being promoted in place? No, I'm not against him being promoted in place. But what I think is that for us to do that, we have to have a competent interview process and we have to have other candidates. And we have to consider that. So at this time, that's the act that I'm asking is that we set a timetable and we set a work session as a council. And we begin considering hiring and what we're looking for as a police chief. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but police chiefs in the state of California serve at will of the city council. It is an at-will position for city council appointment with police chiefs. So that's something else that needs to be reviewed with the contract and the protections. And also, um, the period here would be potential probationary. I'm not asking for anything more than what would be normal for an administrative position. And I'm sorry that in some circles inside of the city government, it has been taken like this isn't a personal attack. It's not. Mark's done a good job for us. But we're also looking at the liability, the overall liability for the whole city. And we're looking at the strength of our department, a very young department, a very inexperienced department. We've been trying to rebuild and what type of leadership we need for that. So I'm asking that we don't appoint Mark at this point in time. I'm asking that we set a date. I would like to prefer to be back from vacation. I've spent hours on this. There are other people in this room, I think, and I don't know who all is there. But I've asked, uh, the district attorney to talk about, um, maybe address you, uh, text, talk about his interview process. And I also forwarded this Zoom link over to Danny with the CHP, who's a lieutenant there. And he had some, uh, comments he'd like to make about just the interview process, just how they go about promoting with inside their departments. And the district attorney had some insight on maybe the liability issues that we might be facing if we just simply appoint without interviewing and being sure that we have the right candidate we're placing in that position. And that, that is it. I'm asking that the action be that we set a timetable and we do a session, a work session, and look at the qualifications we need for police chief in the modern world that we're in. And make sure that we get a candidate who meets the qualifications we need for our department.
Thank you very much for your comments. Why, um, I disagree with much of what you have to say, um, Mr. Cox. And I believe that we have appointed an interim chief, a good one, and, uh, who's been acting on our behalf for seven months and has the full support of his staff that work with him and the community here. So I, I, well, I hear what you're saying about, um, wanting to do all of that. Um, that hasn't been a practice we have, and I am not in favor of, uh, jumping a practice that because you feel that it needs to be done. And I hear a lot of what you've done, uh, and, and, and not a lot of what Mark's done. But I hear it from the people who sit in front of me now, who have spoken on his behalf. And I would like to make a motion to appoint interim chief Mark.
We can't do that. This agenda.
Yeah, I can't do that, Kelly.
This is process motion, so it's how you want it, the agenda item as listed is.
Okay, so I would like to make an agenda item for another moment to appoint Chief Mark Muller, or interim chief Mark Muller to chief please.
You can't do that at this stage, Kelly.
I, I'll be interrupting right now. Thank you.
You're going out of, out of, out of, off the agenda.
To go forward with a contract to be, um, put forward to us in two weeks from the finance director and pro temp mayor, um, with this proposal to come in front of the council member as an action item. That is what I would like to. I agree with you. So we have a motion to do that, to come forward back to the, to the board with, uh, an action item to appoint Chief Mark Muller and to have finance committee and Cheryl, pro temp mayor, to review the contract and bring that forward to us in two weeks.
Well, two things, two things here. I, I have something to say before this motion goes forward here, Kelly. We have a discussion action item we haven't actually voted on, that was placed on the agenda by me, actually the way it's supposed to be, and publicly put forward. That's one. Two, um, you're saying the finance committee, but the public safety committee is actually Cheryl and myself. And on top of the public safety, hey, hey, Kelly, I'm not done. On top of that.
I interrupted you.
It's, I'm, we're still on the, uh, public safety committee. So you're making a committee up in basically out of order here of your own making. I don't think you can do any of that right now.
I think I can if I get a vote on it.
Jeff, would you like to chime in on this?
So there's.
Does this meet the, uh?
Process they're looking, under this, there's been a motion made for, I guess, motion process. Be a appointment of the chief of law. And so that's what's been made, um.
With a two week.
With a two week.
Contract developed by the finance director and pro temp because he's not here. The committee's not all here, so.
Yeah, and, and the way the motion read, um, council member, Cox, is that it was not a committee, but, um, a member of the public safety committee, which is Cheryl Elson. So it wasn't, they weren't trying to warn me, they were.
I'm just trying to get this in scum.
Well, I'm going to have to say that I'm sad to hear that. It's one of the more unprofessional comments I've ever heard in my life. We're looking at trying to promote an administrative position. When you look at the administrative job title that Warren has put forward to this council, it's disturbing that we have no job description for this council in the role of an administrative officer as high as a police chief. And I would strongly oppose this, uh, council doing this. Um, so if we make a motion to vote on that, I'll, I'll give my vote. But I would like to know if there's any comments from the, i- is the district attorney there? Nina? Would you like to make a comment as to the interview process and the professional qualities of administrators that you require in the district attorney's office?
I think it was a discussion. There's a much longer table. I mean, the, the district attorney and, like, about less, approximately fifteen minutes ago.
And so we're in that further discussion. And I guess somebody, the appropriate under Rosenberg Tools Board, I believe, somebody, if someone wants to shut down the discussion part of this, there's been a motion, whatever, there, we're in further discussion. Somebody would need to make a motion, close debate on the, on the motion, motion says there, we're, we're in further discussion. So from our legislative standpoint, if there's not an internal agreement, then somebody needs to make a motion, continue discussion or stop, simple action to stop discussion. So it needs to make a motion on that, it is act to act of the motions, yeah. So that's up.
I make a motion to end the discussion, uh, direction, procedure of appointing the position of Alturas chief.
Can we end the discussion and now?
No, there's just, there needs to be a roll call vote on that.
To end the discussion?
End the discussion. Anything you guys do has to be a roll call vote under this procedure.
Um, are we going to do a roll call vote on this?
I'm. I.
Um, that's pretty sad. If you're not listening to discussion on this from the senior law enforcement agent in the county, the district attorney's office.
But there needs to still be a vote. On the remaining. So. No, there's.
Roll call.
No, 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 there. We haven't finished the vote. Mayor Cox has not registered his vote.
For the motion.
For the current motion, it's a.
So we have to do a roll call.
No, you've done it. It hasn't finished.
He just needs to answer. Council members.
Yes. I'm voting nay on the end of discussion. No.
The ayes and one nays.
Now you need to get to a vote on, thank you, roll call vote on the other motion that was made by.
So that motion was made by, seconded by Sammy. It is to, uh, appoint interim chief, have a special meaning, to appoint interim chief, Mark Muller, um, as peace of chief, chief position with a contract to be negotiated in two weeks, between finance committee and.
The finance.
I mean, our finance director and pro temp. For a contract. Do that. We got a roll call.
Roll call, Steve? I. All right.
No.
The ayes and one nay.
That's literally most unprofessional thing I've been part of in the city council. I'm going to sign off now. I have prior commitments like Kelly does. So I think you can, uh, still have a quorum with Kelly, Sammy and Paul there. And Paul will be available for the rest of this because it won't be a, um, any conflict with him anymore. So you guys have a good evening.
It's somebody to get counsel.
You're right. And you, you have to, like, you. I'll let him know. These are again. No, we've got past anymore. That's my worst. You've got to get your worst. You couldn't get your worst on. I found one. Unfortunately, that's not what they didn't get rid of the whole. I got mine too, twice, forty-four, sir. So your question, what we will go, we're on, I'm two hundred. The job.
updated job description for the assistant public works director with the intention
Oh, yeah. So this is just update, that's just a public work director job description. Trying to put some passion into it for a lot of hats, public work.
And Mark, Paul and I voted for Fanya, um, revising, uh, working on a chance to get over shoes over all the limits. So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approved the, uh, updated job description for the assistant public works director with the intention of going and advertise as requested by the director.
Everything on this, it was as we roll call over.
Hi.
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 I'm all access. Uh, the report discussion action we got to uh, fourteen point three there is from the understanding between the United Public Employees California Local Seven Ninety Two Otters, General Unit and the Smooth Otters.
Paulson and Brian, is that here? You want to pick that one or you want me to do it?
If you don't mind.
Sure. No, not a problem. So, um, as requested at the last meeting, we, you guys wanted everything forward with the general unit. So I put in the proposal that Paul and Brian agreed upon in there along with a copy of the M O U as well as the salary schedule for your guys' group today. If they're retro, if their salaries are stated and all that. So if you guys
It all sounds good to me. I think you guys did a good job. Um, you and Brian did some negotiating. I see smiles on some people's faces. So I'll make a motion. I, I, I'll make the motion to adopt the memorandum of understanding between the United Employees California Local Seven Ninety Two, Altris County Public Unit and the City of Altris.
Roll call vote.
Walter Kowski? I I
That would be the motion to adjourn.
I wish it was adjourned. I'll second.
Yes, you gotta, you gotta roll, roll, roll those things. Sorry. Everything, everything you do.
So on your next